Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dandle Board of Education meeting. Our work session today, a lot of times on a work session, we don't have items that we will take action on, but this one we do. Waiting a week would make it better, so we'll be things we're going to take action on. Under 1A, we have the approval of the agenda as presented, and I'm requesting that we make an amendment to the agenda and add a 2A, which would be the approval of the lease for the bus garage. So, and I need, I need a motion for that, please.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda with a 2A for approval of the bus garage.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the amendment of the agenda, adding 2A, the approval of the lease for the bus garage. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Now, we need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted with changes.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted with changes. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, we've had an extraordinary year based upon a lot of things. We've had a good financial year. We've had great people on our board, and, you know, Melinda being our newest, and we've just got a lot of good things going on. New superintendent, so in turn, as everywhere, the property values have, are just astronomical. So, the assessments have gone up so much, and I can only remember this probably tw- another, once or another time in my sixteen years I've been doing this, where we've actually had this situation. So, what it does for the Dandle schools and our tax rate is that rarely can you lower your tax rate and then still receive additional monies for the district even at the lower rate. So, the taxpayers benefit because the rate will be lowered, but because of the high assessments, we're able to take advantage of it and kind of do a twofer there, you know, lower the one and get more tax dollars coming in. So, there are, right now, our tax rate is at ninety-eight point one, and actually, that was lowered from last year. So, we have a lot of options here, guys, and are you all looking at the pages? If we decided to take what they call compensating plus the four percent, which only means it would be, and it's really never four percent, it's kind of an arbitrary number, but if we were able to do that, the tax rate would be ninety-seven point seven, which would be about a four-tenths drop, and then we still would be able to bring in an additional three-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. Now, I've had some people have called me and said, "Why can't we lower it two points," which would take it down to ninety-six point one, and still would allow the district to bring in additional two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. A two-point drop is substantial. So, any comments or? And there's a lot of other options there, too. So, I do want the board to remember that we did a five percent raise. We also are looking at purchasing two buses. That's going to be about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, and there'll be some other things coming out of general funds, so take in consideration, you know, that.
Not those buses, is that two-hundred-and-seven-some-thousand per, or books of both of those?
Both. And it might be a little bit more than that. I think it's almost three-hundred thousand, so. So, I mean, I just want to kind of see where you all are, and then at some point you all can make a motion.
I'd be comfortable with the ninety-seven point one. Then that way, we still dropped a point, but we would have enough to cover four school buses and our five percent raise.
At least would help with the five percent raise.
Well, yeah, one covered all. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
But having four buses, that'd be nice, comfortable.
That sounds reasonable. Yeah, that sounds reasonable, yes.
Jim, you good with Jennifer? All right. So, what you're telling me, you're looking at dropping it to ninety-seven point one, which is a percentage, and you're still going to realize good dollars coming in for the district. Like I said, this may never happen again, I mean, at least for a number of years. So, we need a motion, please.
I make a motion to drop it to ninety-seven point five percent.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to make this part of discussion. We also have a tangible tax rate, which I'm recommending we keep it the same. It's, that goes to businesses and things in their buildings and that kind of thing that are of value, and that's been at ninety-eight-three for a number of years, and I'm recommending we keep it at that. And then the motor vehicle tax rate is like sixty-six point five, and it's been that number for a long time also, so I'm recommending that we keep that.
Okay.
Work through the.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, Jennifer, I hate to ask for whoever made the motion. Melinda, can you add those two in there, please?
Right.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, Jennifer, oh, Esther, sorry.
So, I make a motion to change the tax rate to ninety-seven point one, and all else will stay the same.
Need a second.
I need a second.
So, we have a, we have a motion and a second for the motion. So, all those in favor of ninety-seven point one is our tax rate. Our tangible tax rate would be ninety-eight point three, and the motor vehicle rate is sixty-six point five, I believe, and whatever, it's whatever we've had for the last couple of years. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you all. All right. Now, let's go down to item 2A, which we added to the agenda, which is the lease for the bus garage. Mitch, you want to enlighten us a little?
Sure. Each of them should have a copy of it in front of you, and so, the, the original lease was prepared by the property and most attorney, and then what you see in red markings are changes that I've requested be made, and they're okay with that, is my understanding. And then, also on page, I'll point out what these different colors are with one sentence highlighted in yellow, section N. That is a requirement of the school district and our insurance policy. I don't have a concern about it. We just need to, as I mentioned to Mr. Dunn and Dr. Ross, that we need to make sure our insurance carrier is okay with that sentence. I have no objection to it, but basically, just at the thirty-thousand-foot level, this is the lease for the property that we've talked about at previous meetings at the end of West Lexington Avenue. You can see at the bottom of page one, it's for a four-year term, but then when you come to the top of page two, the portion of inserted in red is language KD requires. I mean, the school district, I think, has every intention of getting a long-term lease, obviously, but this is language that KD requires. You can see the rent, the middle of page two, and then it's, looks like it's a three-percent angle increase. In addition to the rent, the school district would pay the tax bill on the property, and I don't know what that amount is right now, but that's the school district that have that. Of course, that money's coming back to itself, so it's sort of washed, or at least, at least the school district will. We have in section O on page five talks about improvements. We've inserted some improvements that we know that the school district will want to make. We've already put those in there because the landlord will need to consent to any improvements the school district wants. School district will pay for the utilities, and those are, those are the primary points of the lease. I don't know, second, I don't know if Mr. Dunn wants to add anything to it. One thing I do want to put on the record, we looked at the lease, the landlord will be a limited liability company called Green Nova Enterprises, which is, I think, by Melissa Marlowe and her brother, and I just wanted to put on the record that we've looked into it with Ms. Marlowe being a school district employee. You know, there are always questions about, is there a conflict of interest or that sort of thing? We've looked at that issue. We have two board policies on conflicts of interest, one for certified employees, one for classified, and then in addition to that, there's a Kentucky statute, KRS 156480, and an attorney general opinion we've looked at, and they really center on the fact whether the employee has any direct control over the finances of the district, which I don't think Ms. Marlowe in her, in her job does. She's.
I promise you.
But, yeah, for example, if this were a lease to a finance, you know, from finance, that would obviously be a problem, but, but I did want to just put on the record that we've looked at that issue and determined that it's, it's not a problem. Any questions about the, the lease itself, or Mr. Dunn here, any questions to him?
No. Mr. Dunn, I saw you submitted pictures because the big concern was, would we be able to fit the buses into the building, and obviously, that.
No, we, we took the bus over and one of our eighty-four passengers, and it was, it was able to fit, you know, easily into the building. One of the concerns was, at the entrance, there was some gravel, so, you know, the weight of the bus and the weather, we'd have to make some improvements, too, to the area outside the garage, just to sure it up so it, it would rudder out really bad and didn't make it more hazardous, once the, but, you know, when we start moving buses in and out. It's a really good space, it's, you know, adequate space for, you know, mechanics to get in and not worry about, you know, things getting taken, or just the amount of traffic that we have through, that walks through our campuses during the day, it's, it's kind of amazing the number of people you see, just community members just walk that, that's the best route, just even just random people that uses a cut-through, so I think it's a big safety help by having somewhere secure, you know, the amount of equipment and everything we have to deal on buses, so.
Well, and this came about because of what we're paying on bus repairs and obviously not having our own garage. Now, we can't do everything, but a lot of the general maintenance things and things that we can handle, we'll be able to do that and not have to be out in the middle of the parking lot.
Yes.
Making these repairs.
Yeah. Yeah, especially, you know, during bad weather, or, I don't know, we were trying to change an oil painting on the bus when doing a downpour, and, yeah, it didn't go well. We just, we just scrapped it for the day.
And it, it looks like in our contract, we're talking about camera systems put in? Do you have like a timeline for that? I'm just curious.
No, that was just things that I was, you know, kind of brainstorming of what.
Yeah.
We would use, I mean, if it was onsite, if it was onsite, then you, you know, you'd have to want to have some sort of.
Yeah.
Camera system installed and, you know, internet.
Yeah.
With wifi, phone systems. I haven't got Mr. Go for it, so.
Okay, well.
Get on, you know, set the belt, the timeline, and plan for, you know, those things. What's this, a TV, a TV, like a monitor surveillance system?
Yeah, that's what.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Steve, does anybody have any more comments or questions?
I could say, there will be, I think, two things that we need to do before it's actually executed. This part I pointed out in yellow, we just need to work through that with the insurance carrier, which shouldn't take long, and then unless it's happened today or Friday, I think the property still has to be deeded to the LLC from Ms. Marlowe and her brother, and I think their attorney is working on that. So, I think that we can, if the board's so inclined, it would be appropriate to approve it now, and if that motion could include approval of the lease and substantially its form it's in now and authorize Dr. Ross to sign it on the campus school district.
Okay. We need a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the lease as presented with the exception that Dr. Ross will be able to sign in the future.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the lease for a new bus garage for Dandle. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Before we have to finish up.
All right.
I don't know if you all want me to stay normally and not be here in the work sessions. I'm happy to be, but I don't think there's anything else that's legal.
I think you're good.
All right.
Thanks, Beth. Appreciate it. Okay. All right, so let's go to item number three, which is facilities. As the board knows, we've had people, citizens come in and have concerns about our air exchange and quality of the air, and obviously, to these folks, it's a big deal. Being a person that's gone through COVID, I have no clue where it came from, but it did. And Ms. Weston, who has been presenting to the board as a citizen, she and her husband both have from COVID, and she couldn't be here, so she said it was okay for me to tell folks that. So, Mr. Dunn, if you'll introduce our guest.
First off, we have Jimmy Adams.
Arnold.
Jimmy Arnold. Jimmy Adam. Jimmy Arnold with Train and Bob Miles. They both work for Train. They're really, play, play a really big role in our HVAC systems and our monitoring and making sure we're running efficiently and everything, so they both came in and did some, ran some tests and looked at numbers on our air quality and here to offer recommendations and tell us what we were doing good and what we can, need to improve on.
We've got a handout, if that's okay?
Sure, it is. Then Bob, if you don't mind, if you'll be at the, is that good for you, Brian, as far as this table here?
Yep.
And Sam?
Okay. Can you sit down?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, this handout kind of summarizes our talking course as well as the, the assessment we've done recently. And I'll say this, we've been doing this for, well, since it started with COVID, and we've been obviously focused on air quality for a long time before that, but it's taken a whole new, obviously, level of focus of everything that's transpired in the last two and a half years. And with Train, you know, we kind of keep ourselves rooted down to the basics with ASRAI, American Society of Heating and Refrigeration Air Condition Engineers. They set sort of the, the bar of what you should be focused on with your building environment, and sort of gave us recommendations. From those recommendations, we've established what we call the four key areas of indoor air quality, IAQ, I may say IQ in the future. So, with that, we call it the four pillars, and with that, each, each of these sort of stand on its, on its own, as far as its importance, as far as its application. The first is, is what we call dilute, and what that means is basically bringing in sufficient outside air. I'll say this, we were really focused on surfaces at the start of this, and that, that continues to be some concern, but what we know now is this is primarily airborne transmission and through modeling and whatnot, and I think we knew some of that before. If you can dilute those particles of viral load and disperse them as much as possible with outdoor air, it lowers your concentration, and it's like everything, time plus concentration equals exposure, and so if you can try to mitigate that concentration as much as possible, then obviously you want to do that. Now, being that we're in the climate zone that we are, we get all sorts of weather. You know, you get the humid of the humid and the cold of the cold, so sometimes those are challenging times, but you try to maximize that as much as possible with your, in ways of outside air ventilation. So, when you're bringing outside air, you also want to talk about exhaust, because a, a building is typically, you know, sort of, imagine it as a box, so you're bringing in air from the outside into, but everywhere, you should exhaust some of that so that you can try to balance this out. You want to keep a little more outside air coming in to exhaust or keep your building positive, and so exhaust becomes an important part of this, so that's something that we also look at in our assessment. The third category is what we call contain. To be honest with you, I don't know exactly why we call it contain, it's humidity, that's what we, that's what it's about, and so it sounded good, I guess, someone, someone thought that'd be great. So, it, it's all about humidity, and like I mentioned, we're in climate zone where we are, humidity can be a factor, especially in the summertime, so you're kind of looking to keep that humidity range between forty to sixty percent, and that has to be referenced with the dry bulk temperature, so you're talking space temps around sixty-eight to seventy-four. So, that's kind of what we're trying to do, is keep that, when, when there's documents in the space, try to keep that achieved, so we keep the humidity in check along with that temperature. Why that's important is because they have found studies where if you're too low, and we'll find that in the, in the wintertime, actually, the viral load atomizes when cough and sneezing, and then that can suspend longer when you have a low humidity, and obviously, with higher humidity, we, we can see the repercussions of that through fungal growth and whatnot, and obviously, there's also a higher growth in transmission with higher humidity. Then the last, last one is clean, which is basically air filtration. So, you notice air filtration was last, so a lot of folks want to go straight to air filtration, so that's something that we really feel strongly about, is we really need to set ourselves, we're all four pillars standing on our own and not just focus on one thing. So, it's a comprehensive strategy. So, I sort of set the table of what we're looking at in terms of assessments, and we've done these throughout the Commonwealth, even in Indiana. I don't know how, but we've been deemed experts in IAQ. I don't know if we were looking for it, but we've done so many of these, we, we know what to look for. And so, so with that said, we did walkthroughs of facilities, and we tried to sort of scale them and rated them according to each of these four pillars, dilute, exhaust, contain, and clean, and you sort of see what, what we have here for each of the facilities, and I'll say this, nothing outrageous here. I mean, this is, this is definitely fixable, these are things that, you know, that are obviously, that can be repaired. You're in a good, decent place as far as indoor air quality goes, as far as these four parameters go. So, just quickly going through each of these with HOGS, you know, your outside air equipment is operational, and, and what we do with that as well is we also take readings in the spaces. So, we take representative readings, and we sort of look for what we call, you'll hear the word CO2, carbon dioxide, that's what we breathe out. If you have a high concentrated carbon dioxide, that means you're not breathing sufficient air, outside air, and so we took readings, those readings looked good. We try to stay, ASRAI recommends below twelve hundred parts per million, you're well below twelve hundred parts per million, so we're good with that. That also translates to exhaust equipment, and your humidity on contained was within the recommended range. I'll leave clean to the end because it takes all, all the schools into account for that comment. The high school, same, same situation, outside air, CO2 levels look in the appropriate range. You're typically looking between outside air, CO2 would be five hundred, so you're looking at five hundred, twelve hundred, you're definitely below twelve hundred, which is good. Exhaust fans are operational, the humidity was a little higher, reaching towards a sixty percent. I think that was taken during the humid, more humid time, it was about seventy-three or so degrees outside of the high humidity, and we've had that recently. Today is wonderful, very low humidity, so that, that can kind of fluctuate in your outside air conditions. Tolliver, we did have ERVs, which stands for Energy Recovery Ventilation, so these are your outside air units. Were not operational during the walkthrough, and we saw CO2 levels that reflected that. I am happy to report, we, we actually.
We got those back online, and then I come by at two o'clock today, met with Cory and walked them, and I'll just give you an idea about how those numbers changed. On the eighth, when we walked the cafeteria, the CO2 level was twenty-one thirty-eight, and that's elevated. Two o'clock today, it was thousand eighty-seven, so it's well below twelve hundred, lower than, it's working well. The front office was twelve ninety-six, marginally high, and when we read that, it was a thousand ninety-two. Room one eighteen just happened to be a room that we went into. At that time, we went into it on the eighth, two windows were open because some, some child had been sick, so they opened the windows, as easy would put that, and it was eight sixty-eight, and we checked it this afternoon, well below. Corridor was at thirteen ninety, and the, now after their equipment come back on, it was a thousand twenty-five, and a corridor is really a tipping point for me when I'm out here checking these buildings. If I see a corridor in good, good place, I feel really, I can just about guarantee you the building's in a good place, because corridors typically are not ventilated as much as classroom spaces themselves. So, if you're getting good ventilation at corridor, those classrooms have, they're usually in a good spot. And then the library was twenty-one sixty-nine, and they had a bunch of kids in there, and it was down to a thousand eleven, cut it in half. And then the third floor was at eighteen fourteen on the eighth, and today it was eight thirty-two. So, your ventilation system's back online, it's doing what it's supposed to do, your humidity was ranging anywhere from forty-eight to fifty-six percent, and that's just perfect for us, we're concerned in IAQ. And the building felt comfortable, and you can tell that it was a totally different space today as compared to the eighth. So, we're, I told, I told Cory, I was tickled to death with the readings we were getting, because I have been in some, across the state, it's been as high as three thousand, and so, yeah. They didn't have any discipline problems because everybody's asleep, but he could all work that. So, that's what we had on Tolliver. So, we had good results on that, and we're really pleased with the results.
Thank you. So, Dayton Middle School, we do see opportunity with the RTU, stands for rooftop units, OA is outside air, so the area rooftop units and outside air damper position. So, these are rooftop units, these air conditioning units are mounted on a roof, and they have outside air damper, so they're, they're also taking return air from the space as well as outside air, and they condition it and put it back into the space. We do see opportunity to increase the outside air damper position on that, so the minimum position can be increased a little more to give you more outside air during all the time, you know, even when the conversation's not very great. So, we, we just, I mentioned that as an opportunity. I don't believe that the.
But with that said, the CO2 levels were not elevated. They were, you know, they were, they were pushing twelve hundred, but they weren't what I would call a problem. We got up there and looked at the outside air dampers, and so we saw they were closed. So, that's a carrier system, and we're just going to have to get in there and figure out that carrier operating system and figure out what we've got to do to get the minimum, and that, that'll take care of it, we feel confident about that as well. But we didn't look too much, it had a phosphor nest in there about bigger rounds than your fist, and Ernest didn't want to come up here and fight us, so we sort of backed up a little.
Yeah. We started running a lot.
They looked for it.
No one got hurt.
Got hurt, so we got safely off the way.
Exhaust are operational, humidity look good. So, across the board, what you have far as filters go are completed. MERV is a, it's basically an efficiency rating for, for filters, and they range from one to upwards of sixteen plus. Higher the number, the more finer the filter. So, A is, is actually pretty good for schools, that's typical, it's very typical. You'll see A or lower. So, what is, what ASRAI did recommend, if you can, go MERV thirteen or higher, and you can go higher either by doing actual finer filter, or if it can't sustain that, use some kind of technology, and you'll probably hear a lot about that from, from folks. What, what we basically are looking here, guys, is, is let's get our exhaust, let's get our outside air, let's get all these things taken care of, and if, it's sort of, I feel like you're on a decent spot, but if there's really concern, you may want to look at increasing filtration in certain areas. And we did make that as far as nursing stations, as far as places where you're really seeing high valve, low, cafeterias, choir rooms. Uh, cafeterias, choir rooms, where there's a lot of, you know, those kind of things. You may want to think about increasing your, your efficiency of removal in those areas. But um, I would give you all a decent grade as far as your all's current situation, especially in light of the, the improvements that have been made. We did make a couple more uh, recommendations at Tolliver just like Cory sort of said. Looks like we need to change those filters more often because they're starting loading up pretty fast on them. So he's gonna, he's gonna look at doing that. Uh, and then we do have one last energy recovery ventilator in Tolliver that's offline. But with that said, the two out of three seem to be doing a pretty good job first getting on outside air. And then as we already mentioned, outside air damper positions for the rooftop. So, you know, this can go as far as you all really want to take it. But we want to give you a good baseline, a good sort of situational awareness of where you're at now.
One thing I would add, I'm sorry, one thing I'd add about the MERV thirteen. Uh, if you, if that is something that you discuss and are interested in maybe increasing from MERV eight to MERV thirteen, I would recommend that you don't just go and order tractor trailer load of MERV thirteen filters. It's based in all the guidelines says that once you get to MERV thirteen, if your equipment can handle it. Well, if we start putting in too much constriction on there, you know, we're, we could be creating more problems. So what I would recommend there is maybe put it sporadically in different spaces and then monitor, see how quick it's loading up. And also see how it's affecting your discharge air and how it's ventilating your space. So that's an issue that, that I just want you to be aware of. You know, we've had districts that just go all out and buy MERV thirteen filters and throw them everywhere and it's turned out to be counterproductive. So it makes us, just
Makes the syst- makes the system work harder.
Work harder, motors, we've got some places with
Old, old motors.
Well, if you buy MERV thirteen filters, improve it, old motors, buy a bunch of motors the same day because you're gonna need
Right, yeah, put in more air.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's right.
Only that side, only side about changing the settings over at bait middle school is that, does the district have to pay for that? Is that something you all do anyway, just make sure it's just not breaking policy?
Well, this, I'll be back here, was it Wednesday? I think I'll be back here Wednesday. That's what we're just going to investigate Wednesday. We're just going to get into that carrier system and see what we can do or change the minimum outside air load percentage.
Okay.
That's something, that's something we just come by and worry about every month to.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think Cory's pretty capable as well. That's the need to camp the guy, he can, he knows.
Okay.
So you mentioned keeping an eye on the numbers. So let's say we went in and strategically purchased MERV thirteens for various purposes. Um, how, can we keep an eye on those numbers?
Sure.
Okay, we have
Yeah, you might take really, your system will allow you to do that. Uh, you know, the biggest thing that we look at is discharge air temperature. And then we also can trend all the data. We can see, we can also look at the historical trends to see how, how the system was acting before we put the filter in. Then we can also compare that data afterwards and look at our trend lines and see if we're losing, you know, efficiencies. So we've got, you guys have got all that in place. So it's, and Cory and Ernest are, they're very well aware of how to do that. And then I'm training continually as well, keeping everybody up on, on that kind of thing.
But any of those systems, how build and test equipment?
Yeah, for us, the CO2 levels. Uh, I'm not sure if we have CO2 monitoring. Uh, humidity sensors is something I'm sort of a champion of right now. I'm, uh, whenever possible, I'm trying to put humidity sensors, not in every space, but I do like to have a general representation. Humidity sensors don't fix anything, but they let me know if I've got a problem, if I need to change how the building's operating.
Loach, loach and
Well, we just look at trends, we look at trends.
Fin monitoring, yeah.
We do that.
We do fin monitoring, okay.
But I don't think we have any CO2 uh, equipment placed at this point.
The ventilation equipment uh, typically does. Uh, so you can look at the return coming from the space and sort of get some averaging. And so you get representation of what that looks like. And, you know, uh, those always can be integrated to the control system, you know, to, so you can watch that. Uh, that's just a good thing.
The, the last thing I do want to bring up is the nurses station. Uh, the nurses station is the hub, especially on the elementaries, you know, stomach virus, flu, COVID. Um, you know, there are things that you can put in that that can also take care of air in surface. You know, I know from being in schools before, I know COVID's bad, but a stomach bug can wipe you out too. So just want you to be aware, you know, if that turns into an issue, you know, there's, there are systems that we can put in place. Uh, you can, if you was to go full board, you could be just like my daughter was and she worked COVID unit in the hospital, you can put in a whole independent system to have negative air pressure and pull that all out. That's not, I, I'm, I have a feeling KDE will probably have post-COVID, that's probably something that's going to happen on new construction, but existing construction is not going to be, but that's where it's headed. Any other questions?
So this is a school, so what grade would you put us? What percentage do we get on this?
Well, yeah, I mean, so we're, we're basing, we're basing this on uh, the minimum. You know, so we're saying, so are you doing what, what's basically required by ash rate? And then sort of what's been put into uh, sort of standard. And so I, I think with these improvements that just occurred, I think you're probably a C+, B, B area, you know, and
I'd B+. I would use your B. CL, uh, your CO2 level is something I watched hard. And I see that your CO2 levels are coming in well. What we learned anything from COVID is outside air is your best friend. And we can bring in outside air that, you know, I know there were people out there putting a lot of stuff in these buildings that helped with clean air. But the best thing is fresh air and ultraviolet. Those are the two things are proven on, on COVID.
Well, one thing around here in Danville, we don't have any industries that produce the air. So we have good clean air coming in, that helps.
Yeah, and that, it's kind of hard because you, like I said, you can take it as far as you want to hospital grade. You know, it's like, you know, there's had to be a line. You know, everyone's got, there's only so much resources you have. You're trying to make it a, a good learning environment. And so you're just getting back to this, the basics, you know, of this, I think you're in a good position. I think, I'll go B, I'll go B.
And I would say this, your, your head, your head lost your gears.
You too.
Well, the fact that we're having this discussion, uh, there's a lot of folks that, yeah, they're not convinced with this.
This is, this is great information to share with the community. They may not get all of this, but to say, the experts are saying we're at that B range, maybe C+, B, that's more, you know, maybe receive that.
That's what this is meant to be.
And Bob's point, you know, getting to A, you know, I think me and Mr. Becker talked about, you could get to A, but how much resources does it take to get to A? You know, there's got to be, there's got to be a breaking point. And I think that's where the problem is pretty close to that.
Okay.
We don't want to be a burden to, to your finances.
And I'll say this is a testament to your facilities folks as well. You know, they're, they're staying on top of the canes. And they got a lot of irons and fire. So this is uh, you know, when you get this kind of stuff, it's a, it's a good representation for staff.
And on that point, your filters, when we checked your filters, they, they changed them every six months. The filters looked clean. I was, I mean, we're getting ready to come up on a next filter change, except for Tolliver, it loaded up a little bit. But the rest of your schools of filters, if I hadn't known any better, I thought they were just put in. So that shows you that your buildings are clean, uh, you're, and you know, it's functioning correct.
Did anybody else have any questions or comments? Dr. Ross, do you have anything you want to add?
Just grateful, appreciate you all making the time to do this.
I do it, I do it.
And also, big ups to Mr. Dunn, appreciate all your
And I, I don't know if you two gentlemen know, but, and I don't know exactly, but we've had a, an extended relationship with Trane in this school district. And I know through the years that I've been involved, you guys have always been here anytime we needed things to get taken care of and installs and whatever else. So greatly appreciate you all being a part of the Danville system.
Glad to help.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. March, you're up again.
Uh, next up, I've got, we've got the softball concession stand and nurse rooms updates. Mr. John Carmen's here to discuss and go over anything, any questions we may have.
Hey John, thanks for being here. Good to see you again.
Good to be here, always. Um, we have, uh, through the better part of the summer, um, been working on the concession building. There've been a few delays. Um, we had hoped to have been a bit further along, but nonetheless, we're at a point where we are ready to go out to bid with this project. We have finally, um, finally finalized, um, the arrangements with the company that will be doing this project as a manufacturer of prefabricated building. Uh, and that is, the mechanism of that is through the cooperative system that the school board is part of so that it can be somewhat of a direct purchase. So we've gotten those details mostly worked out. There are a few other items like some site prep, uh, and running utilities to the building that will need to be put out for public bid. This is a lower tier project, so we are able to uh, bypass the initial steps with the Kentucky Department of Education in terms of plan approval. Uh, so we're, we can go straight out to bid. Now, KDE will have to approve the bid once that's received. But I believe that we can get this out on the street, um, this week, later this week. Uh, probably would suggest about a three week bid period. We could prob- we technically could go two weeks, but I, I don't think that additional week will, in the big picture, will hurt anything. Also in today's climate, it is hard to even get bids sometimes. Um, just because of a lot of different factors that we've all been reading about and hearing about. It, it's sometimes difficult just to get contractors to get to, put together bids. But I'm, I'm in hopes that that can happen. Hopefully somebody locally, it's not a large project, but somebody locally can, can submit a good bid for this.
You might be surprised, I'm on airport board and we had a bid, we lost three hangers in thirteen hour draft in December.
That's right.
And so we wanted some bids to come in, six showed up.
Really?
Yes.
Was that just recently?
Yeah, the last three weeks.
Well, that, that's encouraging.
Yeah, they came, they came up, they came through. And as it turned out, when they submitted their bids, they were less than three hundred thousand dollars apart between y'all six.
And were they, um, I, I, I'm really interested in this because I've been personally, we've been tracking this because it's such a hot topic. Were the, were the bids within a, uh, within a good range of the established budget?
Yes, insurance is taking care of it.
Oh, okay, okay. That helps. That helps.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'm, I'm sure you all have seen just, I think even in the paper, uh, the Lexington paper day about the middle school.
Oh, yeah.
About that fiasco.
Sixty-nine million dollars.
That, that's, yeah.
Up there.
We are seeing some signs of some leveling off now. We're, we're not bidding, I mean, this is a really small project, this concession
True, true.
I mean, a lot different than a
Airport.
Airport or a middle school or something, but it, it's still, the, the roller coaster construction costs are just, this, this will fall more into, um, this is, what we are bidding is more about labor and not so much about materials. So hopefully we can find somebody local. I don't know if these airport folks were, these contractors were local. If you had six, they probably came around.
The winning bid came from Lexington.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You haven't know who, I'm just curious.
Jay.
Jay, got, yeah, I actually worked
Yeah, Jay got, got the bid. One interesting thing we was concerned about was when they say, go ahead with the work, the supply line.
That's correct.
Getting the parts in, you know, we may say, we want to bid Monday, but we'd be some fifteen before you get the stuff in. You know, but that's not the case.
Um, this is, um, this, this project is set up, we're, we're committed on the, through the, um, COOP, we're, we're tied in. Um, it is mostly a wood product.
Okay.
Nothing like steel that is, or PVC is a big issue. We will have a little bit of concrete for the slab.
Right.
That's, uh, but it's, it's one, one pour. Hopefully we can squeeze a truckload of concrete out of the local concrete.
So after the bid is made and selected, do we have a timeline?
Yes, um, so after the, the bids are received, we can look at some dates, perhaps maybe even receiving bids on the day of a board meeting. So the, the, the board has to, uh, accept it or reject it. If it's accepted, then it'll take about two weeks thereafter to get approval from the KDE. And then a notice to proceed can be given to the, uh, the winning contractor. There's a possibility, and I, I bring this up because of the topic we're talking about. There's a possibility that the board, if the bids come in higher than, um, anticipated, higher than what the accepted BG1 is right now, the, the board has the ability, assuming it's not just crazy. The board has the ability to approve, um, a higher BG1 amount. That can, and then that recommendation can be taken to KDE for their final approval. You, you all can get to the process.
So anticipating if we can stay on the timeline you've suggested, if we can get the bid out this week or next week, and then three weeks, that puts us into October.
That, that's a spring completion date. And, and that's probably where you're going.
Well, yeah, I mean, so I mean, we just have to realize that that's what we're looking at, so.
So I don't, um, you, you might be able to share, you might be able to help me out, but, um, I don't know that we technically need board approval to go out for bid. I'm hoping that you all have been able to look at the plans. It's a pretty simple set of plans. But it, it wouldn't hurt to have board approval to go to bid on this.
Okay, and well, I was well, well, I expected, yeah, that we would do that tonight while you're here. So, um, do y'all have any other questions? Dr. Ross, do you have any?
Yes, sir.
When is softball season?
Softball season, uh, fall training should, should be starting by now. Um, but season starts February fifteenth for, uh, practice to begin. Uh, usually games start about March, first of March, middle of March.
Will they have a place to sell concessions if that's under construction?
No.
Probably not.
The, the good news is, is this project is not going to stop, uh, delay, practice, annual games. We can have an enhanced experience. Make a few bucks off of hot dogs.
Okay.
There you go, yes, sir.
Okay, so if, if there are not any other questions or comments, uh, I agree with Mr. Carmen. We need to go ahead and have board approval to start the bidding process. So if we could have a motion please?
Make a motion to begin the bidding process. Second.
So we have a motion second to start the bidding process on the softball field. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carmen.
Thank you very much, good to see you.
And John's heart is with the Danville schools.
He's a, he's a Danville grad.
So, see ya. Okay, under number four, which is a staffing request, Mr. Lumen, are you going to speak on this?
Yes, sir.
This is a new position for an athletic director clerk. Well, this would be good, this, the public will see you.
I'm on fire line.
Well, um, we, we've had a new transition with, uh, with that position of athletic director. And I just kind of want to start off by introducing our new interim athletic director, Mr. Charles Lynn. Do you want to stand up, you want to slap your hands? Mr. Lynn, uh, has graciously agreed to step in and help us fill his position and fill the void uh, that recently opened up for us. Uh, he's done a phenomenal job with hitting ground He's done a phenomenal job hitting ground running and trying to, you know, pick up where things have were left off. It's always tough to come into a job halfway into it. That job is round the clock, 365 days a year, even in a small district like Dambel, you know, sports is of value to us. It's one of our pillars when we talk about academic arts and athletics, and so there's a lot going on all the time, and Mr. Lynn is doing his best to pick up. So what I'm coming before you for is, I want to be able to provide him some support. The support is, Mr. Lynn is still teaching here at the Virtual Academy, so we offer the virtual option here at Dambel Schools, and he's the mainstay behind that. He meets with parents and families and students via Google Meets or Zoom, and he sets those schedules up all the time, he checks on their grades, he's always on it. I say all that to say, I'd like to give him some support in the athletic director clerk. That position would be someone that would support him, with the paperwork, with the finances, with checking upon all the different administrative side of it in, in the high school. So we would want to kind of tag team that role with Mr. Lynn, part of it, and then the other part coming from someone within the high school helping with, with just at any point, get the PO done, helping make sure that we get officials paid and all that other stuff, and budgeting and all that good stuff.
And I think it's important to mention that that's also a 12-month job, and it's not something that's, you know, seasonal, something that supports nearly throughout the process, so.
Yeah, and the way that that position is funded is, it is a stipend position, so he's going to get a portion of stipend that was left over from the previous holder of that position, and then it would transition, we want to be able to pay the other person that's helped support us. It's a lot of, lot of hours. Years ago, I know I look rather young, but a long time ago, when I was a full-time teacher and athletic director at Bryant Station High School, I taught social studies, full load of social studies in a modified block, every other day block setting, but I also had to do the athletic director's job, and it was, it was two full-time jobs rolled into one. And so I want to kind of help him in this transition as we move forward, just for this year. This is not a position that we need past this year, but it's something that would help support us at the high school throughout this year.
And so previously, this work was done by just athletic director?
Just the athletic director.
What would be different about next year?
Next year, that full-time athletic director would start, you know, kind of in, in the break of the season is a dead period, last week of June, first week of July, so this position opened up more into middle of August, into August, into September, so there's a lot of things that we're just hitting the ground running. I don't know if you got to come to bowl game, if you got to see my masterful parking skills, I was directing traffic because we were, we were shorthanded very quickly, and so it was, the bowl was upon us, we're hustling to get that done, and all hands on deck. I have to commend a lot of people in our athletic department and at Dambel High School, because they jumped in and just helped out right away, not asking for any compensation at that time or anything like that. And so we do have somebody in mind that will help CJ and help work with that part, and we just want to make sure that she's compensated accordingly because of all the roles that she's going to have to play.
Esther, do you have anyone tomorrow?
I was thinking as processing.
Do you have someone in mind, or is this a position that would be?
We do, we do. All right, I'll have to say my name?
I would rather you not.
Okay, well, this person has been involved in athletics, has been at Dambel Schools for a number of years. She jumped in when that position opened up and made sure that she was helping us all the way. She did not want to take on the full-time athletic director job. She did want to support whoever was in that role administratively throughout, and so, you know, we were really, really blessed to have her kind of step up. She's very, you know, she's very adept in IC, so she's going to be able to help with all the grade checks and making sure that she runs those reports that were required as soon by the KHSAs that way, and then CJ would be the one that would kind of take the lead role, hey, I'm going to the coaches to talk about this, I'm going to go talk to the KHSA about this. He would handle all the other transfer paperwork and stuff, and we just, we wanted to make sure that that, that transition was seamless, that we kind of double teamed it right there, because CJ is a full-time teacher, he's a full-time employee at the Virtual Academy. This other person is a full-time employee of Dambel Schools, so kind of putting them together to get that full, full package is what we felt like we needed.
Is that the documentation?
Yes, sir.
So from my understanding, it's not going to be a huge increase on our budget, correct?
Oh, no. No, the number that I had talked about with that other person was about $3,500 is all I was going to request.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the new position for athletic director clerk.
So we have a motion and second for the approval of the
I'm sorry, do we need to add a contingency for the one year?
Well, the, yes, please do.
Okay, so.
I mean, because the job technically would end, I think we'd let those contracts in May, is that correct?
Well, I mean, we still have state championships that go on into May, and then in May, I'd say more like June.
June?
Yeah.
Is that comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the new position for athletic director clerk with the contract ending in June of 2023.
So we have a motion and second for the approval of the athletic director clerk position. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, okay, back to Mr. Lumen.
There was one other part that I wanted to talk on here, if it's okay if I do at this time, I don't see it on the agenda. Do I need to ask to be on this number later?
Well, can you tell me what it is?
Well, what we've done is, we have partnered with Morris Academy, and we want to offer our athletes both based on softball.
That'll be another agenda item.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks. All right, let's move to item five, which is the Head Start Utilization Agreement. Suzanne, can you just talk on this?
Sure, I'm happy to talk on that. So we are required to have a Head Start Utilization Agreement with the local Head Start, which our Head Start is actually in Marster County, so the closest one, and anyone who has a public preschool program has to have an agreement with Head Start because they don't want a local preschool program to keep kids who are in Head Start. So in order to have a Head Start, or a preschool program, which, we have to fill a certain number of seats every year at Head Start, and our agreement had never been negotiated from when we created our program, and we've actually worked with Head Start to decrease our seat requirement there, because we found out you can do that, and we've always decided to have 20 seats at Head Start, which is a full classroom, and we looked into like what neighboring people have there, and they, one neighbor doesn't put any in our program. So we, we're filling the Boyle County classroom on our own, and so we renegotiate that to 15 seats. We can, we can send more there, but we're required to have 15. There is a benefit to some families to sending students to Head Start, because students can qualify at Head Start at the age of three based on income, and here, we cannot take kids on income until they're full. They also will transport kids, and it's a full program. Some people don't, you know, it's just a matter of what's the best fit for families. We have a really great relationship with Head Start, and it's not that we don't anticipate that we can still pull a classroom there, but it would be a matter of how to pull a classroom there in order to, right now, we're sitting in a place where it's very easy to fill Head Start and our program, but a couple of years ago, we were really struggling to fill Head Start, and in August, we were really concerned about the requirement, so it just gives us a little more freedom to change. But this has to be approved by you all in order for us to move forward with this.
Okay, any questions or concerns? Okay, the motion, please.
Make a motion that we need for Head Start Full Utilization Agreement.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the approval of the Head Start Agreement. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thanks, thank you, Ms. Carmen. Ed, I believe you are going to be up again?
I am.
So presentation of interactive playground at Hogshead.
Sure, and I don't know, this, I don't know how much, Mr. Dunn or Ms. Pike, if they, they're welcome to try and add. The reason that we are presenting this to the board is, Ms. Pike had, she's our MSD teacher at Hogshead, and she had brought up a need for the students, particularly in her classroom, to have a more accessible playground space at Hogshead, and through some staff at our school that had experiences in other communities or schools that have accessible playgrounds, we were able to make some connections really quickly and get some great resources together, and we've had several meetings, and Mr. Dunn has been involved as well, and we have put together a list of some items that we would like to have in an accessible playground space. What we're asking today is to tell you a little bit about what kind of we want, but also to get permission to put a bid out for that accessible playground space. But I do want to tell you, we're not asking for money. The, the group that we've worked primarily with is a group that also will fundraise for us, so it's a, it's a program where they work to do fundraising and to work with contractors to help us with that project. So we still have to put that out for bids, but we're looking to hopefully partner with the, with the group that would also take all the fundraising with us. And in some communities, they have completed the playgrounds in five months, so they're doing like grants with us, and it can happen pretty quickly, and I think in our community, we would have the buy-in to support that project. So part of that is getting a commission for bids, then of course, like we've been looking into, if we go with that organization, they, we've been working to see the requirements of their MOA that they have entered into other school districts with, and one of the things that that requires, for example, is fully accessible pathways to the space for the playground, and we want that to include a fully accessible pathway from our parking lot, so that if somebody were to come after hours, which happens a lot, or from a community, then they could still access, access the playground space. If, we'd be behind our gym, there's a open grass area, there's a, by the garage door, there's a big round concrete slab, and we would use the concrete slab to put in a sensory museum, and so it could be used by all students, not just students with any kind of special needs. It would include an additional area, which would have some shading, so that there's not too much, there's no shading in that area, and then an additional playground space that would be about 5,000 to 5,500 square feet, that would have to have inclusive flooring. So it's the kind of flooring that can take a fall, but also support a wheelchair. So the flooring is quite expensive, but there's grants that also will help on that. Ramp accessibility for any playground structures, an accessible merry-go-round, musical garden, wheelchair accessible swing, two belt swings, so that we can have peers that are also swinging, and two inclusive swings, and then an additional, an additional shade sail over the inclusive playground structure, any kind of curving and swing mats too. So that's kind of what we're, like our dream, what we would like to do, which also, of course, would include the accessible spaces, and then also the ground has to be prepared to make sure that it drains. Thank you, thank you. Because of the mats, the accessible flooring, it has to be drained really well, or it doesn't last as long. Am I forgetting anything?
The areas leading, it's the sidewalk over to the playground.
Yeah.
Working on the drainage, the drainage.
Right, oh, there, there is a drainage spot there that we also, I forgot about. There's an area near our existing playground that floods pretty badly, which you wouldn't be able to get through during that time from the playground, so we're looking, we're getting pricing on adding some drainage along that spot.
Yeah, and also making it wider, was it?
Yeah, it's not quite wide enough right now for two-way traffic.
And, I guess that was it?
Mm-hmm, and that can also be included in a fundraising project, all of that extra work.
So you're just asking for permission to go out for bids?
Yes, sir, at this time, and then what we would like to do, if it's, it's something you can decide on later as you're creating an exit draft, but we would like to ask that the group that we would like to partner with have an opportunity to present to all the school about what they do. And they could do that at the next meeting if you want, and then the bids wouldn't be closed yet, that they can come next week, or if you'd like to invite them, we don't need them, but they're going to be able to do that too.
Do we have, are there any school playgrounds in Dambel area, does anybody know?
There's one in Anderson Dean, and there's Jackson County.
There's a small one in Lancaster, behind the Five Star, it's very small.
I've seen that.
Yes, but as far as a playground like we are wanting to present, that I know of there is not.
I was just wondering, you're Bergen, wasn't it?
Oh, right, Bergen doesn't want to.
Yes, Bergen doesn't. They just, yeah, they've, they've got nine, and the state of Kentucky.
Millennium has done some inclusive playgrounds in that one, yeah, but it's very small.
I've seen the one in Lancaster on Campbell Street.
Yes.
Top, yeah.
This would not be as big as some of the other ones that have been built, it's a big one that's been built in Somerset.
They just finished building more than Somerset, that is massive, but it would not be that big.
Right. So for future reference, I know that Tolliver isn't part of that, but could we in the future talk to the same people to have something arranged for Tolliver as well? They will work with to do as many as we want. Okay.
Also, I could put the initial one in, can it be added on, made larger without any time, time constraints? I think we'd take long to add on to it.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that.
The ground, it's a special ground.
Right.
Okay, 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 yeah, so.
And then would all students be able to use this, or would this be sectioned off in some way?
Everyone can use it? All students.
All students.
There, have y'all already talked about like an intentional plan to make sure that happens, that students who are differently abled will engage with other students, so it's not a separate thing with the income, we're not there type of thing?
It's very inviting, like, we're, we're at the park in Jessup County this weekend, and like, it's, kids, kids will gravitate to it, because it just looks, it looks fun.
Especially with the century museum part of it, and the musical garden part of it, the century is just phenomenal, and it, you know, I know several kids that it would benefit. It's not only in my class.
It invites activity.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, but my question is more so like, is there a plan where all kids are in the same space at the same time, so, you know what I'm saying, so it's not
Their playground.
Right, yeah.
Right. Yeah, and I, I mean, absolutely, and we already do a lot to integrate those kids with the rest of the school to make sure that we, that that happens, but I think that we will have a lot of students that, we already have some musical features on our existing playground from Hudson Health Grant, and they're very popular, and I know that, that I think that the musical garden, the century gym, I see our, a lot of our teachers using intentionally as instruction, especially with music.
Yes, absolutely.
Incorporating the electric.
They're still teaching outside.
It's like five or six different musical
Like there's chimes, there's all of it. It's a, it's, they're the only company that makes this accessible sensory museum, the company that they partner with that does the
Well, I think the board is more than interested in
Right.
You know, allowing the bid process to happen, and then I'll get with you later this week about maybe inviting them on. And then I'll get with you later this week about maybe inviting them on the nineteenth. We're going to have a pretty full agenda on that meeting and so I just got a superintendent, I need to just figure out and make sure if it should happen or should we wait till October or so.
Okay.
Okay, so we need a motion, please?
Make a motion that we.
Or the bid.
I make a motion that we, I want to bid for an interactive playground at Hogsett.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the, uh, approval to start the bidding process for an interactive playground at Hogsett. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Sounds good, yeah, very inclusive.
Okay, we have two items under consent agenda, shortened school day request and then the swim team contract. Uh, the contract is, on the swim team is basically what it was last year, but we need to do a more approval on it, uh, each, each swim season. So if there's not any comments or questions about the consent agenda, we need a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion in second for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries. All right, now, number eight, we need to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
And we have a second, I'm taking that, so the motion and a second to adjourn this, uh, this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.